The Vision of the Church of God Temple in the year 2025 is anchored in the transformative truth of Hebrews Chapter 4 and verse 11. Let us labor therefore to enter into that rest. This year, we are called to embrace and embody the profound rest found in Jesus Christ, a rest that frees us from striving and positions us to live in the fullness of what Christ has already provided. To labor to rest means to let go of self-effort and the false belief that we must do something to motivate God to love us, answer our prayers, or meet our needs. It means ceasing from works that seek to earn God's blessings and stepping into the truth that in Christ we already have everything we need. This rest is not passive. It requires intentional effort to hold fast to God's promises in the face of life's challenges. When fear, doubt, and pressure arise, when the doctor's report seems final, when financial stress looms, or when hope feels distant, we are called to labor to believe what God has already said. This year, let us labor to enter into God's rest so that His power may be fully manifest in every area of our lives, that we may claim by faith what is already ours because of what Christ has already done.
Welcome to another Bible study here at the Church of God Temple here in Grand Bahama. Reda Senior Pastors Pastor Judy Pedo, Associate Pastors Pastor Gregory Monroe, Pastor Ina Davis, and yours truly, and all the deacons and ministers and members here at this wonderful sanctuary. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for this opportunity to come in your house to just expound on your word, dear God. Dear God, you said if you like wisdom, you let your mind like wisdom, let them ask. And dear God, right now, we come to just expound on your word and to learn and to have more of your word inside of us. And as we dwell on this word today, dear God, we ask you that your word just go forward with power in the name of Jesus. Tonight, I want to talk from a very familiar scripture, the Great Commission. We all know about it, Matthew 28:19 and 20. I want to start with 8. "And Jesus came and spoke unto them, saying, All power is given unto me in the heaven and in the earth." He says, "Go ye therefore and teach all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, of the Son, and of the Holy Ghost, teaching them of all things whatsoever I have done always, even unto the end of the world." God's instructions was very clear, very clear. He said to go into the world. This was risen from death, and he would have came in contact with his disciples, and he was about to be ascended into the heavens. And he said to them, "Go into the world and teach all nations, teach them, baptizing them in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Ghost." When we think of the word "go," that is an action word. That means to move. We come into the house of the Lord because the Lord tells us to don't neglect the assembly of the saints. We come to be taught, filled, and when we get full, we need to go out there and empty ourselves, go out there and put three in the word to the sinners over there. Everybody don't come into the house of the Lord. Everybody don't have to come and get behind the pulpit. Everybody don't have to come in and conduct Sunday School. Everyone don't have to get up and speak inside the church. But if, when you get near, and the senior pastor would have delivered the word, teach us the word, and be able to expound on the word and feed us, when you go out there, he said to go out there and teach them. How else, the Bible said, how else they will learn if somebody don't teach them? That's what we supposed to be doing. We supposed to go out there and teach them. We supposed to be out there, no matter where we are, in the food store, at the gas station, the pump attendant, wherever you meet somebody, tell them about the goodness of God. Sometimes we forget, and that's all he asks us to do. He tell us to go out there and teach. And then when we then teach them, he wants us to teach the whole nation, not just one set of people, just these set and forget them set. No, teach everybody. Teach them. Make them disciples. Make them disciples, a person following Christ and His doctrines. That's what we supposed to be doing, encouraging the people to come into the house of the Lord, encouraging the people to visit in the church. Baptism water to be cleansed spiritually. When we go and we baptize early morning, the last baptism we had was at Tino Beach, and we ran out there early in the morning, we watched the sunrise, but we ran into that water. All the water was cold. That was some cold water that morning. But when we go down, when you go down and we baptize you in the name of the Father, Son, and we submerge you in that water, when you come up, that's cleansing. That is doctrine. That is what we supposed to be doing. That's what we supposed to be teaching. That was his instructions to his disciple and to us. That's the instructions he left. Are we doing it? Are we doing it? And when we talking about preaching, to proclaim and to make known by sermon, teaching the gospel, they said, "Teach good news." He ain't come to, he ain't come yet. Oh, if you don't do this, you going to hell. You use a sinner, you... No, teach about his love. Teach about his goodness. Teach about what he did for us. Jesus is not coming back here to do anything. We don't have to be what is about to do. He ain't about to do nothing else. All we got to do is teach him believing in his word. That's all we have to do, teach him about believing in his word. And when you talk about teaching, you just giving knowledge, skills, and instructions on what to do, how to lead them to the sin, lead them in the sinner's prayer, lead them to God, lead them to God. And that's what he told us to do. He just wanted us to just be able to teach his word to his people, just wanted us to say, hey, this is what we want the people them to know. This what he want us to do. This what he said, "I need you to do. I need you." Not just the pastors, not just the ministers, everybody, just for everybody to do. You are a child of the King. This is what you supposed to do. You are part of the body of Christ. You are supposed to go out there and teach and preach the gospel. You don't need to get behind the pulpit for that. Do it anywhere. Do it wherever you, wherever you run into somebody that need, you would be surprised to know how much people you might run into, and you just give them an encouraging word right then, and you lift their spirit. We don't understand that, we need to just understand that getting behind the pulpit dying the only thing. We don't need to be fighting to get behind there. We could be anywhere and do that, anywhere and do that. All right? Now, these instructions was given, were mentioned in the Bible four times, four times. The same scripture here, Mark 16:14 and 18, Luke 24:44 and 49, and Acts 1:8. But you know what I like? We can go right to Mark 16. We can go to Mark 16. And I want to just talk, it's the same thing, same scripture, same scripture. But it goes a little bit more on depth. It says, "Afterwards he appeared unto the eleven, as they were sitting at me," so they were eating, "and uphitted them with their unbelief and the hardness of their heart; because they believed not them which have seen him after he have risen." These were the disciples, the eleven who walked with him. And they didn't believe. You could imagine that. You been walking with Jesus all this time. Jesus gone down, and he come back, and they still didn't believe that he was alive. They still had doubt in their heart. That is, that's something serious, you know? You could be, that's like you in the house today. You're being taught properly. You're being taught the word, and you're being taught the word, and you still having unbelief in your heart. You're still having, you're still doubting. The eleven who walked with him, they were doubting. They didn't believe. How many years? Over 2,000 years ago. The Bible speaks about people that still not believing, and that's today. We are hearing the word over and over and over, and we still don't believe God's word. We still have a problem believing that he already done the work. We still have that problem. And 15 says, "And he said unto them, Go ye into the world, preaching the gospel to every creature; and he that believe it and is baptized should be saved." See that word there? Believe it again continuously, TH on the end. Believe it. You have to continue believing this word. That's the only way you would move and see the manifestation of God in your life. You have to continue to move, to continue to believe this word. You can, one day, you believe today, and then tomorrow, you having doubt. That's like when you praying. You praying for God's healing, which he already did. But you still, after you done finish praying, his word back to him, you still say, "But..." What you saying "but" for? You ain't believe what you just pray for? Why you still butting? Why you still doubting? All we have to do is believe. All we have to do is believe. It says, "And he that believe it and is baptized should be saved." That's God's word. You should be sa... You believe, you saved. But he that believe it not should be damned. You think about that. If you don't believe, you ain't going to hell because of your sins you doing them. You going to hell because you don't believe. That's what the Bible say. That's what the Bible say here. I say this, this God's word. And it says, "And these signs shall follow them that believe in my name." They should, and these are things what you should be doing. These are things here as saints, children of the Most High. These are things you should be doing. In my name, you should be able to cast out devils. You should be able to recognize the enemy, recognize them, and they, you recognize them and cast them back to the pits of hell. These what you should be doing. This how you, when you go out there, you should be able to be prayed up, ready to Should be speaking in new tongues, speaking in your heavenly language. Speak in your heavenly language. These are things that you as a should know, should be doing. Say, "They should take up serpents." You should be able, you know, a lot of say, "Ain't nobody can go walk up and take up no snake now." I know much people who can do that. Yeah, we can go grab, we can go grab our blade, and that snake, yeah, yeah, he had gone. That's the first thing we can do. But the Bible tells us, we should be able to take up serpents without fear. He haven't given us the spirit of fear. Once we got God's word in us, and we believe, we baptized, and we going out there to work in His name, nothing should scare us. You could take up serpents. It says, "Even if they give you something to drink deadly, it can't hurt you." And nothing, don't care, the devil can try, you know? Don't, 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 don't get it twisted. The devil is, the devil don't want you to spread this word. He don't want you if he know you getting too strong, and he can do everything. He can give you all his things, he can run the... Remember, he is playing your mind. So the first thing he could do is get in your mind and try to tell you, "God, you don't believe in God. Don't, don't, don't believe everything he saying." All he trying to do is make sure. That's why the Bible tells you, we knew that daily. Every time he try get in there, you break out. You run him back, tell him, "Go to the pits of hell where you come from." All right? You don't let the devil fool you, but don't get it twisted. People can try you. People can give you, don't care up there. They could give you a glass of water, give you some Kool-Aid, they give you anything. Anything they give you to drink, if it in line up with God, it ain't gonna hurt you. Why? Because you believe on Him, and you know that nothing gonna hurt you because of what he tell you. Don't care what they do to you. All right? It says, "They should should recover." You should be, that's what, that's what we are called to do, be able to recover. We shouldn't be those who are doubting. They were doubting God's return three days after he would have been crucified. They doubt, you know, Pastor said on Sunday, if they didn't, if the ladies didn't go, Mary, Magdalene didn't go, and tell them brothers, Jesus was back, they'll still be hiding. They'll still be hiding. It's, but eventually, they get their act together. They get their act together. when it says, and we go back to Matthew 28 and 20, when it says, and the last thing he said, "And I am with you always." God can always be with us. Don't ever think you alone. Don't ever think you and this alone. We are, we got to remember, we are one body. There's no bunch of other gods in them. Now, you know, I know some people, they got some other gods they got going on. Now, those people who are there with other gods and believe in other things, that's them. But the Bible tell me, in Ephesians 4 and 4, there's one body. There ain't no bunch of different bodies. There's one body, one body, one spirit. And even as they are called in one hope of your calling, there's only one God, one Lord, one faith, one baptism. One Lord, one faith, one baptism. One God and Father of all, who are above all and true all in you all, in you all. Nobody else. It, 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 all of us. So this ain't no bunch of, this ain't no bunch of thing where we need to know, we need to know that there's no faith in us. All us need to be, all of us need to understand that we are one body. We are one body. There's no bunch of other gods. There are no... So stop thinking you could go there and be on your own. You don't need no covering. You don't need no pastor over you. You know, you hear all kind of things on the radio. You be like, well, y'all don't need to be in church. Stop listening to that garbage. Stop listening to these things. Be careful of what you be listening to on them social media. Be careful. Be careful. The devil, the devil know how to get you in. He using every different avenue to get you. If he can't get to you by talking to you through somebody, he can get you through the social media. One of the things would be always in our phone, and if we look at it, every time you click on TikTok and, what the next one, Facebook and all that, you keep strolling. You keep strolling. And you know what I realize with TikTok and Facebook and all that? If you look like you search for one thing, that one thing what you search for, you know what TikTok and Facebookers do? They continue showing you things or something related to that which you search for. So what you think happen? If you search, you even ain't got to search no more because it can automatically come up on your phone, automatically. You keep strolling. You say something bad, what you think it keep showing up? Bad? I ain't used to other word, but you keep searching, keep moving. And that's how the devil creep right in on you. He want us to go there and teach the gospel, the good news. Teach everyone the good news, not no bad news. We could use social media for the good news, and that's what we do. When we livestream to our online audience, members, that's what we do. We teaching them the good news. There's good grounds. We could have been saying something else, but we ain't teaching something else. We teaching the word. This is a Bible-based church, and that's what we go by. We don't talk what we feel. I feel listening, no, no, no. We giving you God's word, and that's what you can get. You ain't gonna get nothing else from Church of God Temple. You gonna get the word. One more scripture I want to look at, John 3:16. Everybody know John 3:16. Everyone, John 3:16. They said, in this, and this is my final scripture for the night, final scripture for the night, says, "For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten Son, that whosoever believe it on him should not perish, but have everlasting life." You see that word there again? Believe it. Everywhere we turn in the Bible, what he talks about? Believing. Why is that so difficult for us to do? That word, amen, is, that is repeated so much in the Bible. Why? Because he's trying, but the Bible tells us, in order for us to get it to sink in, it said, "You gotta hear and keep hearing and keep hearing." So if we gotta say it 100 times in one service for it to sink in, then that's what we can do because that's what the word he tell us to do. Faith come a hearing, and you gotta keep hearing it. But believing, I don't know what it is why people doubt, but anyhow, y'all don't doubt, not y'all, not y'all in here, not my online, you know, not the others people they doubt. All right? But we talking again, but this, you see this word show up again? Believe it. Believe it in Him. We have to continue to believe in Jesus Christ, have to continue. And then it says in verse 17, "For God sent not his Son in this world to condemn the world, but the world through him might be saved." We talking about being saved. What, what, what our base scripture was, Matthew 28, it says the same thing. Go ye open the world. Go ye open the world and preach the gospel, baptizing them in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, so that they may be saved. You know, I obviously, I don't know, I didn't realize the song, the song came from this actual scripture. You know, the song we used to sing back in the day. Say, "Go ye therefore and teach all nation. Go, go, go. Say, "Go ye therefore and teach all nation. Go, go, go." Watch what it say. "Baptizing them in the name of the Father, the Son, and Holy Ghost. Go, oh yeah, go, go." I know you all ain't know I could sing. I could sing, it's a best singer. But watch verse 2. Watch what verse 2 says. It says, "If you love me, really love me, feed my sheep. If you love me, really love me, feed my sheep." Say, "Lo, I will be forever and ever until the end of the world." Oh, God. "Go, go." See, y'all supposed to be helping me. "Go." But anyhow, y'all get the picture. Y'all get the picture. I know I'm not the best singer. I'm not, what the my name, all of the other good singers, but guess what? I ain't singing for y'all. I singing for God. So regardless if you like my singing or you don't like my singing, that's unto Him. It don't matter how I sound, once He get the glory. That's all I can turn about. Make a joyful noise unto the Lord. Some of us will walk inside the church and don't open their mouth, since we want to talk. Some of us want, we don't even want to speak. We don't even want to speak. We don't want use God's breath. We will walk in the house of the Lord and be looking for the prayers to Him to boost us up. We want to look for the prayers to Him to boost us up, and if the prayers to Him ain't do it, I feel Jesus today in the temple. What you bring? Did you open your mouth? Did you bring a prayers in the house? But anyhow, I said all of that to say, go into the world, preach the gospel. I said all of that to say, go into the world, preach the gospel. Preach the gospel, the good news. That's all we need to do. Open your mouth out there. Don't worry about getting behind the pulpit. Go out there and preach the gospel. Tell somebody about God's good word. Amen. We thank you tonight for being with us. Be with us on Sunday. Be back with us on Sunday, the ten o'clock worship experience with our senior pastor. We thank you tonight. We wish you all blessings and we bid you a good night. Amen.
Thank you for watching our broadcast streamed live here at the Church of God Temple in Freeport Bahamas. This year, our aim is to rest in God's promises. As we embrace the finished work of Jesus Christ, we invite you to join us in living out this truth and sharing God's word with the world. On behalf of our senior pastor Reverend Judy Bethel, the officers and members of the Church of God Temple, we're so excited to connect with you. Join us every Sunday for our Sunday morning worship at ten AM and every Wednesday at six PM for Bible study. We can't wait to see you soon.